Yeah, it's been good, it's been busy. We need more people on it. Right now, we only have like seven people.
That is true.
Yeah, some of them don't really come very often. We really need two or three more people on it. If you know of anybody.
Yeah.
Definitely could use a few more people.
Okay, folks, it's six thirty? Time to get started? Are we? We are recording, okay. Time to get started, folks. Okay. Good evening, and welcome to the auditorium. This is the first time we've met here back about a year and a half, or something like that. This is Steve Lionel, Chair of the City of Nashville Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the August 24th, 2021 zoning board meeting. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. This meeting is accessible in person in the third floor auditorium of Nashville City Hall, 229 Main Street, and via Zoom at the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance via telephone is available using the Zoom connection details. The meeting can be streamed through the city's website, nashewanh.gov/318/ctv. The public may also view this meeting later on Comcast Channel 16. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the meeting. To the extent practicable and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case, followed by questions by the Board. Next, persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. All participants should endeavor to comply with timeframes of fifteen minutes maximum for the applicant, and five minutes each for anyone wishing to speak in favor or in opposition or with questions. I see we do have the light timer today, which is over here at the desk. The light timer is used to manage speaking time. It will change from green to yellow when one minute is left, and change to red when the speaker's time has expired. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashville zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in Board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions. Per the City of Nashville bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members is present at this meeting, and we do have a quorum tonight. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashville Planning Department within thirty calendar days from the day of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. So for this meeting tonight, we have the following full Board members in attendance. We have myself, Steve Lionel, I'm the Chair. We have Ms. Mary Ellen McKay, Vice Chair. On Zoom, I believe I saw we had Mr. Jack Currier, Clerk. In the room, we have Mr. JP Boucher and Mr. Rob Shaw. We also have the following alternate numbers in attendance, Mr. Jay Mankara and Ms. Esthathia Borus. If any of the attend- alternates may fully participate in discussions but will vote only if a full Board member accuses themselves or if there are fewer than five full Board members in attendance. In addition to Board members, we also have with us Mr. Carter Falk, Deputy Planning Manager, Ms. Kate Corrier, Zoning Coordinator. Let me see, Mr. Matt Sullivan here.
Not yet.
Nor is he.
He'll be joining Zoom later.
He'll be joining Zoom later, okay. Mr. Matt Sullivan is the Planning Department Director. So let us start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. For Board members participating by Zoom, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you, which is required under the Right to Know Law, and state your reason for not attending in person. So I have myself, Steve Lionel, I'm the Chair, I'm here. Ms. Mary Ellen McKay.
I'm here.
Jack Currier.
I am on Zoom, there is no one in the room. I am not in Nashville on a pre-planned trip.
Thank you. Mr. JP Boucher.
Present.
Mr. Rob Shaw.
Present.
And we have Mr. Jay Mankara.
Present.
And Ms. Esthathia Borus.
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay. So I will now read into the record the first case, which is deferred from the last meeting, where one of the attorneys was not able to participate. So this is, the owner is Jeffrey Lynch, the address 496 Main Dunstable Road, Sheet C, Lot 1999, requesting variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-264, to exceed maximum forty percent accessory use area to allow a proposed 4,400 square foot house on a newly created lot that has an existing 3,600 square foot barn with a proposed 6,000 square foot barn addition. This is in the R30 Zone Ward Five. Is somebody here to present the case?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me, please?
I can hear you. Please give your name and address for the record.
You bet. For the record, Mr. Chairman, my name is Jim Petropolis. I am a civil engineer, and I'm in my office at 3 Congress Street, Hayner Swanson, Nashville, New Hampshire. And if it may, Mr. Chair, much like the last meeting, you're going to get a two-part attack presentation, we thought, on this case. I would start off by presenting some of the facts of the property and of the case, and then Attorney Prunier, who I believe is live in audience, will proceed to touch upon the points of the variance. So if I may, let me get started by just saying, as read into the record, we are seeking relief to allow an accessory use to exceed forty percent of the principal use area. This location, and I'm going to try to screen save, so please, oh, if somebody can allow me to screen save, or share screen, I'm sorry. There we go. And let's see. Is that visible?
Well, we can, we can see your directory listing.
Okay, and how about the drawings now, Neil?
Probably sharing the wrong screen.
Let me try that again. Here we go. Okay. Can you see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you, thank you. So the property question is 496 Main Dunstable Road, which is the home of the applicant, Jeff Lynch, our client, map, Seat Lot 1999. And the current area of his property is 3.899 acres. We are in the R30 Zone. To help get the Board located, we're essentially in the southwest part of Nashville along Main Dunstable Road. The property is abutted by, in blue here, City of Nashville-owned land. It's conservation land as part of the former Hall's Corner Project, Maplewood. Mr. Lynch's property is abutted by his brother's property, who is part of the subdivision, I'll explain that in a minute. A single-family home to the west and a single-family home across the street. And this is Crossway Christian Church, also located across the street. On the property, Mr. Lynch owns currently is his house right here, and he also has a 3,600 square foot barn in the back. That as background, Mr. Chairman, did receive use and dimensional variances in both 2000 and 2009. The variance is for use for landscape business, storage barn, height, and outdoor storage. Now what's being proposed is Mr. Lynch's property will be consolidated with his brother's property, two lots, and then immediately re-subdivided into four lots. So there's essentially two new homes being created. Here's Mr. Lynch's home, new lot 1991, his brother's lot here on 837, and newly created lot 1999-2, with a proposed home, and you'll see on the screen the proposed barn addition, which measures 6,000 square feet, and there's the existing barn here. Mr. Lynch has need for space for, you know, both his personal equipment and some of his toys, as I mentioned at the last meeting. He proposes to store a motorhome. He has antique tractors, as well as other personal items to store in the barn. The proposed barn measures about 385 feet from Main Dunstable Road, along this line right here, 385. In between the barn and Main Dunstable Road is, as I mentioned, his brother's house, a future lot, the existing house, but also high ground here. And this high ground will serve as really a visual buffer to the back of his property. The variance request, before I turn it over to Jerry, under your definition 190-264, is that an accessory use by area shall not exceed forty percent of the area of the use of the structure or the lot. And so the proposed barn, 6,000 square feet, when added with 3,600 square feet, is 9,600 square feet. When you divide that by the size of the lot, 2.738 acres, it's only eight percent, so that is a conforming dimensional standard there. However, when you divide the 9,600 square feet by the proposed house, which is 4,400 square feet, roughly twice the size, it's 218 percent. And that is the reason for the request this evening, to exceed the forty percent for this proposed barn. So I will be available to answer questions, but I think at this time, it may be appropriate if Attorney Prunier steps to the podium and addresses the points for the variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board. For the record, my name is Gerald Prunier. I'm an attorney with offices at 20 Trafalgar Square in Nashville. And I'm here representing the applicant this evening. I want to, first of all, thank the Board for continuing this from the meeting two weeks ago. You saw firsthand how technically inefficient I am here. No matter what I tried, it didn't work, even though I was ready to go up to the point of where you turned the meeting over to me. But my technical efficiencies, fortunately, I don't have to use every day. So thank you, I just want to thank you again for continuing till tonight. I'm here to talk about an accessory use, a barn, on a large tract of land, almost three acres, in an R30 Zone. Mr. Petropolis has talked about the topography of the area, its height, and the distance from the Main Dunstable Road, and also from Buck Meadow Road. As the size, as he showed on the plan, the distance from Buck Meadow Road is sufficient. At the turn of the century, a barn was used for agricultural purposes. Storage of hay, cows, corn, and so forth, as was used in various areas. At the present time, there are not very many places left that need to store cows and hay. More is, the use of a barn at the present time, is to store large objects, such as boats, mobile homes, off-road vehicles, and in some instances, small basketball courts or small hockey rinks, a little hot side for hockey rinks to play in, for children. The location of this barn is on a large tract of land, and is surrounded by large tracts of land owned by the City of Nashville that are under conservation easements and therefore out of sight from the general public. The granting of the requested variance will not be contrary to the public interest. It is an allowed use in the area, except for the size, which is why we are here before you tonight. The purpose of the use is for storage, which is a benefit for the public interest. Many times you go around, you see large boats stored next to a house, large mobile homes stored next to the house. In this particular instance, my, the applicant wishes to store those, out of view from the general public. And a barn will keep all of the views not in the yard. So these uses will be, vehicles will be parked in the barn. The barn does not threaten the public health, safety, and welfare of any of the general public. Fact is, it helps the general public by storing, allowing the storage of these vehicles that would be out in the open in most yards. The proposed use will observe the spare of the ordinance. It is an accessory use on a large tract of land. I want to emphasize that this piece of property is over, almost three acres, it's 2.75 acres. The area is Zone R30. It's almost four times the size of the lots that are required for that zoning district. And again, it will not largely be seen by the public because of the distances from the main public ways, as well as the distance in the back with the topography that is existing on these pieces, on the lot. Substantial justice will be done to the property owner. The property owner will be able to use his property for his benefit, as well as his neighbors. He will be able to store his personal property out of sight of the neighbors and the general public. The proposed use will not diminish the values of surrounding properties. It will be new construction, it will fit in with the area, and the best test of that is the fact that his neighbors, to the best of my knowledge, have not objected, and they've been contacted and told of what is being proposed. Five, the special condition exists. Our engineer has explained that this, distances from Main Dunstable Road, and you've seen the distance from Buck Meadow Road, and the topography that exists on the property on the lot, that hides part of the building in the back. Because of this unique features of the property, the literal application of the ordinance has not a fair and substantial relationship to the good of the public hardship. I want to emphasize that one of the major things is that these vehicles, these boats and motorhomes, are going to be stored inside, away from the general public, which is an advantage to both Mr. the applicant's neighbors, as well as the general public. I'd be glad to answer any questions the Board may have regarding these properties, and I'm sure Mr. Petropolis is available as well.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board?
I have.
Okay, yep, please, go ahead.
I have a question. Attorney Prunier, and bear with me, it may be a question. Oh, I apologize. It may be a question for the engineer. Looking at the driveway, that is really a long driveway, or it looks, it appears a really long driveway in this diagram. Is it the property owner's responsibility to ensure that that driveway is cleared, I mean, all the way up to the barn? It looks like it could be a small street.
Yes, it will be up to the owner to make sure that that's cleared, maintained, and make sure that no one interferes with it, because the property will be in the back. That driveway pretty much exists at the present time to the back barn, but it's his, it will be his responsibility in taking care of it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? Mr. Currier, if you may, you have a question.
Yes, I do. A question from Mr. Prunier. I guess I was a little surprised from the February 22nd, 2000 approval. One of the stipulations, stipulation number three, was no residential use of the proposed barn. Now, of course, that's the first barn. And so my question is, is that still what the applicant desires, or is the applicant aware of that? And really, to me, this application, the proposed barn addition, is for residential use, not commercial use, if I understand it right, but if you could help me, if you could clear that up for me, I'd appreciate it.
I have the applicant here, so I'm going to get you the answer right from him. Hold one minute. Mr. Currier, there's no residential use. The barn, the first barn will stay the same, and the condition can stay the same. The second barn will be an accessory use for the new house, and will be used only for the storage of personal property. It will not be used in any way for any type of business.
Okay, well, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, there are no other questions from the Board? Is there anybody present who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody on the Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this application? I'm not seeing anybody, okay. Is there anybody present in the room who wishes to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody on Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Okay, not hearing anybody. In that case, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Ms. McKay, your comments?
Well, I think that it is a huge request. I mean, it is giant, but it does fall within the guidelines of what we legally have to look at, the accessory use. It's well under the percentage. And there were no neighbors speaking in opposition. The owner and the attorney stipulated to residential use, no commercial use. And so at this point, I seem to be leaning in favor. I guess I'm just going to listen to hear what my fellow Board members have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Borus.
I'm actually leaning in favor as well. The reasons, again, as stated by my colleague, and the testimony from the attorney, and there is no opposition.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I'm also in favor of the application. I find that the special conditions of the property are, it's a large piece of property, even after the subdivision. That's going to happen. Again, it's been clarified that the use will be strictly for personal use, has nothing to do with the existing barn. It's just for personal use, and I can understand, you know, sometimes we all have different things we're into or hobbies, and it seems like the applicant has more home, has some more tractors. So I can appreciate that. I know he restored all tractors, and he had a four stall barn, and that wasn't big enough. So I get that. So, and then, again, the location of the barn, it certainly is not going to impede anybody's enjoyment of life or in the area. You really have to look to see the existing barn that's back there right now. And I think with the new home that gets situated there, it'll actually be another blind to the barn. So with all those reasons, I'm going to support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I guess I still have some hesitation, mostly over the fact that it's still such a huge accessory use, even, you know, it's still over 200 percent. And even with this lot being essentially equivalent, I think, of four plus R30 lots, and if you kind of roughed out even like, you know, say, 3,000 square feet homes for four lots, you're still looking at an accessory use that might allow for close to 5,000 square feet, we're talking over 9,000. So, however, with the fact of the location, still the location of the property, the surrounded nature mostly by the conservation land, as well as no opposition from the neighbors, et cetera, I'm leaning towards supporting it, but I just, I just feel like it's still a very large accessory use. And so that's, that's my, my main concern.
Thank you. Mr. Mankara.
I won't be voting on this one, but, but I can support the application. I think it is, I mean, what we're looking at, just the barn, the barn with addition itself is almost five and a half times what's allowed under the ordinance. And I think the size of it far exceeds what's ordinary and customary for residential use, and the exceedance is so tremendous that I just can't see justification for it. And I would just also add, that's without any other accessory uses, which almost certainly will be proposed on this property in the future. Pools, decks, et cetera. So, again, I can't support it.
Thank you. Mr. Currier.
I guess I wanted to speak, I appreciate hearing the comments, kind of being last here. I wanted to speak to Mr. Shaw's comments, in particular, that I too was, you know, kind of astounded at the overage of accessory use area. And, you know, when I went back and looked at this property, then it came to mind just what was going on. And I remember years ago, when it came before the Board previously for approval, it, there was no opposition, it didn't appear that it would be any sort of detriment to the neighborhood, and it doesn't seem to have been any detriment to the neighborhood in all these years. I remember you could see equipment back then, and the applicant said he would shade it, and, and that seems to be the case. You don't see any equipment for years now. I guess I'm compelled by the, the large size of this lot, and the fact that the conservation land is on the one side. I was very open to what the one abut, because there's really just one a packet of butter, who doesn't have any opposition to this. So I appreciate Mr. Mankara's point that this is a huge overage, but I feel that it's really out of sight pretty much completely, and I think it will not be a detriment to the neighborhood in terms of use or driving. And given the size of the lot, I'm, I find support for this.
Thank you. Now, I was also taken aback at the, the large ask, you know, over 200 percent of the house lot. But it's a, it is a very large lot. The position of the, of the barn does not really affect any of the neighbors or, or people driving by. And I'm, I'm pretty much leaning in support of it. Would somebody care to make a motion? All right, Mr. Boucher, thank you.
Oh.
Well, we have all five members, so all of the full Board members will be voting on the case.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Jeffrey Lynch, owner, 496 Main Dunstable Road, Sheet C, Lot 1999, requesting a variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-264, to exceed maximum forty percent accessory use area to allow proposed 4,400 square foot house on a newly created lot that has an existing 3,600 square foot barn with a proposed 6,000 square foot barn additions in the R30 Zone Ward Five. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. In the event that sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. Again, the approvers of this motion find that the special conditions are that the lot is a very large lot. There's an existing barn on the property that has been there for many years, with apparently no, no issues with that. Again, it's surrounded by conservation land, and there was no opposition to this, to this request. It is within the spare and intent of the ordinance. We find that it will not adversely affect property values surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest, and we find a substantial justice will be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you. And Ms. McKay, thank you for your second. I assume that's what that was?
That's what I thought.
Any discussion of the motion? None, okay. Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Currier, how do you vote?
Mr. Currier votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. That's five to nothing. Congratulations. Your variance has been approved. Please be aware that there's a thirty-day window of appeal. Please be aware that there's a 30-day window of appeal. Contact Mr. Park of Planning Department if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. I apologize for my technical inefficiency. Thank you.
Don't you have like a 13-year-old nephew that you?
No, that's exactly what it was. My daughter said, why don't you have your nephew or son come to meet at your office with you and they hear it? I figured I'd come.
Next, next time.
I don't know, perhaps the billing rate of his nephew might have been too high.
Okay, moving on. Case number two. Owner is Catherine, Catherine Reifert, address 25 Chautauqua Avenue, Sheet 62, Lot 239, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-31 to encroach two feet into the six-foot required rear yard setback to maintain an existing Jacuzzi tub. This is in the RV zone, Ward 4. Is there somebody here to present the case?
I saw Kristen on.
Is there somebody online to present the case?
Hello?
Hello?
Hello, my name is Catherine Richard. I'm sorry, I'm technically challenged, so I couldn't get on Zoom, so I just, for some reason, was muted. But good evening, I'm here representing myself.
Okay, and just give your address for the record, please.
Sure, 25 Chautauqua Ave in Nashua.
Okay.
Lot 249.
Yep, tell us what you'd like to do.
Um, I have a Jacuzzi that was, I got a building permit, we got a Jacuzzi that was put in. Unfortunately, I wasn't here the day the hole was dug and it, after they dug it, they put the Jacuzzi in and I started looking at it and I go, and I realized we made a mistake, we put it too close to the property line. And I would like to apply for a variance for two feet to just, so I don't have to move it again. I'm not really sure what else to say because I'm, sorry, forgive me.
Some of these requests don't require a lot of, of talking, that's fine. Your, your application is quite complete.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
There it is. Oh, so sorry.
No, go ahead, please, please continue.
I was just going to mention that where it is too close to property line, there's, there's nobody that lives back there, it's like a residential. And it's, there's nobody there, so it wouldn't interfere with anybody or nobody would see it or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board in the room? Not seeing anybody. Mr. Currier, do you have any questions?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody present who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody on the Zoom call who wishes to speak in favor of the application? No? Is there anybody present with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? And on the Zoom call? Not seeing or hearing anybody, okay. In that case, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. We're gonna, I'm, just for my convenience, I'm gonna go around in the same direction every time. I get into trouble when I randomize it. So Ms. McKay, your comments?
Oh, I thought it was an ex personnel. Okay. I don't have any problem with this whatsoever. It's an easy mistake to make. Chautauqua is a really quiet street. It's pretty much, once you get in, it's, you know, only one way in, one way out. So yeah, for the Jacuzzi, I'm sure she would want that. So yes, I'm absolutely in favor of the application.
Thank you. Ms. Boras?
I'm also in favor of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I'm also in favor of the application. I mean, excuse me, it's the last house on the street, borders the railroad tracks and some industrial property behind it. It's absolutely, obviously nothing that's affecting, so the two feet is minor at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I concur with all that and this, this is truly seems to be one of those cases where just the mistake happened. It wasn't, you know, somebody intentionally trying to do something and then coming back and asking for forgiveness. This truly appears to be just things didn't go according to plan. And I think the, the, any negative impact is so minimal. I'm completely in support.
Thank you. Mr. Mccarrick?
I agree with comments from my colleagues and I just also note, you know, I think a Jacuzzi tub is a reasonable use on a residential property. And really, given the size of the property and where the building is located, it would be really challenging to locate a hot tub anywhere on the property and maintain reasonable clearance around it and meet the setbacks. I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Currier?
I support the application, even if this application was fresh, if the Jacuzzi wasn't present in its location, but just being proposed in that location, I, I think it still makes sense because you have a railroad and, and the, the business, you know, beside it. Also, it's interesting, over the years, there've been quite a few people on Chautauqua Avenue who were not in favor of kind of the retail change from the Whitney Screw Company because, you know, the thought was it was going to bring a lot of more activity and noise. I don't think that's played out. So I was kind of curious to see if what's now the Trek Bike Store and those companies would have any issue with this. I didn't think they would, but they don't, so I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. And I'm also in favor of the application. Somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Shaw, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf, behalf of the owner, Catherine Richard, at 25 Chautauqua Avenue, Sheet 62, Lot 239, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-31 to encroach two feet into the six-foot required rear yard setback to maintain an existing Jacuzzi tub. This is in the RV zone. Variance is needed for the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, the benefit cannot be sought by some other means feasible. As noted by testimony, the Jacuzzi was incorrectly placed closer to the rear property line than was intended. And the, the, this encroachment was identified after the fact. It also turns out that the nature of this, this property and the location, it's a relatively shallow lot, the location of the house itself and the ability to put a Jacuzzi in and have reasonable clearance and access all around, might have necessitated this kind of placement ultimately anyhow. There's also no adjacent residential properties to the left side and the rear, which is where this location is. There's been no testimony against as well. So it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There's no indication of any negative effects of surrounding parcel property values. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice will be served. Therefore, I propose to approve this area variance.
And Ms. McKay is seconded, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? I'm gonna go in reverse order. Mr. Currier, how do you vote?
Mr. Currier votes in favor.
Yeah, and just a reminder that the five full board members will be voting on this. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. That's five to nothing. Congratulations, your variance has been approved. Please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Contact Mr. Park of Planning Department if you have any questions.
Thank you all very much.
Moving on to case number three. The owner is the city of Nashua, Nashua School District. Applicant is Sean Smith, Director of Plant Operations. The address is 36 Buck Meadow, Buck Meadow Road, L. Chokeberry Lane and L. Cherrywood Drive. L. means land. Sheet C, Lots 762 and 2851, requesting special exception from land use code Section 190-112A to work in other wetlands and wetland buffers to allow for the construction of athletic recreation fields for a proposed new middle school. This is in the R40 F U O D zones, Ward 9. Somebody here to present the case? Please step up, step up to the lecture and give your name and address for the record.
I am a civil engineer with Harriman Associates, representing the Joint Special School Building Committee in the Nashua School District.
You might need to speak into the microphone, just so that people can hear you.
Okay. I am planning to share my screen as well.
Okay. Ms. Currier will help you with that.
Should be all set.
So thank you for, for taking our, our application here tonight. Wanted to give a, a general project overview of what we're doing here. So first, we're, we're providing a main access drive immediately off of Buck Meadow Road, which will circulate vehicles up through, you know, some general topography and ultimately circulate the, the vehicles to a bus loop, which is located within this zone here, a parent pickup and drop-off zone, which is located here. We're also providing a perimeter access drive around the school, which will serve for large vehicles, for deliveries, as well as for emergency access vehicles to basically get to wherever they need to. Parking facilities are located to the north and to the, and to the east of the school. And athletic facilities are also located further to the east. Getting into some of the parking space areas, again, we're providing 38 spaces within the bus loop zone, 127 spaces to the east, which will serve as the main access drive, I mean, the main access point into the school, which is indicated by this green arrow here. In total, there are 171 spaces provided for, for the new middle school. Six spaces are also provided down for the lower lot level. In view of immediate impacts to the neighborhood, I provided an aerial here, which indicates basically that there is some high-density residential zone, kind of within that, within the, the overall area of the project. The school will be sited within this forested wetland, the forested woodland area. This here is Buck Meadow Road and Medallion Court. I guess going back into some of the project history and some of the other folks on the line may be able to speak to this, but there was some community outreach to discuss some of the concept level of design work that was completed with the neighborhood so that they were at least aware as to what the proposed use of that property may be. I believe the last meeting was sometime in, in March of 2020, just prior to the pandemic. Relative to how it fits in with the, within the, the area, we, our team believes that it complements the area in that it's, within that high-density residential zone, it will provide a safe environment for, for kids to use the athletic facilities and ultimately use it as like a recreation area. You know, from, from personal experience, I know that a friend of mine lived close by to a school and, you know, his house ultimately was kind of a gathering ground for, for me and, me and a lot of our, our friend group to, to basically use exactly that. So, you know, we believe that that's an amenity ultimately for, for the residents in that area. You know, with any, with any new development, there's obviously going to be some traffic impacts that, that occur. This development is obviously no different. But we have retained the services of Van Assen Associates, who completed a traffic impact study. And what they found is that our location for the, the main access into the school site is, is sufficient, is safe and, and efficient for, for its use. You know, Buck Meadow is, is a less-traveled road currently. And the other access points into the school, right off of Medallion Court and Cherrywood Drive, would ultimately not be, you know, a best use, knowing that it's within that, that high-density residential area. Don't want to have buses and larger vehicles obviously going through, you know, that sort of situation. So having it located off of Buck Meadow was, was our best, was our best location. As far as pedestrians, again, you know, major consideration for having the road coming off of Buck Meadow is exactly that. We believe that the pedestrian safety is, is obviously of critical importance in that the residents in that area, you know, feel safe with having their children actually accessed through there. There are some additional minor improvements that are also recommended in the traffic impact study, one of which is a, is a right turn lane off of Buck Meadow Road onto Main Dunstable Road, and that will help, you know, sort of relieve some of the potential traffic impacts that are associated with this project. As far as pedestrian circulation and access, they're, they're also providing a recommendation that, that there's connectors along Buck Meadow from Main Dunstable down to Rind Road here as well. So that's in consideration for, for our design team right now. So ultimately, the reason why we're here is seeking the special exemption for disturbances to wetlands. So I was gonna talk through kind of each of the, each of the zones in which we're impacting and, and give, you know, some explanations, some design consideration for, for what we've done in those areas. So the first of which is, is this zone right off of Buck Meadow Road? This is the largest of the wetlands that, that we found as part of the investigation on the site. This will impact approximately 7,800 square feet of wetlands. But from a design perspective, there are things that we did. For the main access drive to actually work, it was going to have to cross this wetland pretty much no matter what we did off of this property. So as far as the design intent, we shifted the road as, as northerly as possible so that we are coming through a, a skinnier section of the wetland and thusly would, would be impacting it less. We've also provided two-to-one side slopes here, again, so that from the elevated roadway, we're coming back down at a, at a steeper grade than, than potentially typical as is with a three-to-one side slope, again, to minimize the impacts to the, to that wetland. And then lastly, we, we do come off of Buck Meadow at a, at a lower slope, again, so that we're not as elevated as we're crossing through the wetland and thusly would have to taper out to, to meet into the existing conditions. The three other areas that we will be impacting as part of this proposed project is number six and seven. Each of these wetlands are roughly 1,800 to 1,900 square feet in size. They're generally low-lying, you know, ponded, small areas, deemed not of extreme value by the wetland scientists that performed the site investigations. And then the last of which is number nine here, again, which will be filled partially in order to accommodate for the, the running track. And I know that Alderman Dowd probably has some additional things to, to speak about on this front, but part of the reason for why we're, we're having all of these athletic facilities and amenities here is, is to provide a balance across the board for each of the, each of the middle schools. Fairgrounds Middle School, Penashuck Middle School, they each have running tracks at their sites, each have ball fields. So ultimately, our programming was to create a balance across the board for, for all of the, of the area middle schools. So with that, you know, I do also want to discuss the processes in which we went through with the Conservation Commission and some of the adjustments that have since been made to, to the plan. Really, it boiled down to two different aspects in which we heard back from, from the commission. And one of which was that there wasn't enough stormwater detail provided to them. We did provide post-development and pre-development drainage plans, as well as some details, but did not include anything relative to calculations or anything again, because it was not required by the, the regulations in, in that application. Subsequently, we have submitted to New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services for alteration of terrain for this project. So they will be in full review of the stormwater analysis and, and design that's associated with this project. And we've also submitted in for the planning board, in which the city engineering group will be in review of the stormwater. The last, you know, major component that, that contributed to the process with the Conservation Commission was relative to vernal pools and their associated buffer requirements. There were two vernal pools that were, that were found during the investigation period by the wetland scientist, numbers five and number eight. Per the, the land use code for the city of Nashua, the buffer requirement for vernal pools is 20 feet. We provided a minimum of We provided a minimum of fifty feet for each of these two vernal pools from any disturbance. The other note that was brought up was that there were potential vernal pools as two, two and four, I believe, were the two potential vernal pools that were, that were indicated within the report. You know, ultimately, there wasn't a follow-up visit, though there were no vernal pool species during the visit initially. We have since realigned the road and updated some of the grading associated to provide the twenty-foot minimum buffer requirement for vernal pools, even though, as currently constituted, they are deemed as simply wetlands. I guess with that, I'll turn it over to the board and answer any questions or comments that you guys may have.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Mr. McCarra?
So, a question for the applicant, if I may, and maybe I missed this. Did you apply for a dredge and fill permit from DES or just the AOT?
Yes, we are submitting for that as well.
Are there any mitigation measures proposed?
No, not for, not for this project. Although we are disturbing over ten thousand square feet, we are going forward with a, with a payment in lieu of mitigation.
Thank you.
Any other board member questions in the room? Not seeing anybody. Mr. Courier, questions? Not seeing his hand up.
No questions from Mr. Courier at this time.
Okay. Let me understand correctly. We have a negative recommendation from the Conservation Commission unfavorable. And if I'm understanding correctly, you're saying that you've made some additional changes to the plan in response to the concerns of the Conservation Commission?
That's correct. So that is specific to the potential vernal pools that were identified as part of the site investigation. Previous alignment and grading that was completed did impact the twenty-foot buffer zone in these, in these areas. We have made adjustments now to stay out of that twenty-foot buffer, though technically, it's not a vernal pool as, as it is, you know, written in the report. It was just a potential, and that there was to be a follow-up completed. That follow-up just never happened. So what we've done is basically adjusted the grades so that we're staying outside of that buffer requirement zone now.
I see. And I assume that this is, I believe this is just, currently, it's a large wooded lot. So, of course, all, most of those trees would be taken down. Okay, that's all the questions I have at this time. Any more questions from the board? Mrs. McKay?
You said that you've adjusted some things. Did you go back to the Conservation Commission and have that discussion? Does that, or would that affect the way they voted? Or they gave their unfavorable ruling?
So we made the adjustments following those, those comments. I know that there was some discussion of those, and that was something that we certainly would have brought back in front of them. But they decided to vote unfavorably at the, at the last meeting.
Follow-up, if I may? So that means that they didn't, or they did not take your change into consideration, and they didn't have any discussion on that change? Is that correct?
Yes. We, I personally have not spoken with the Commission since the unfavorable ruling, and the adjustments have been made following that ruling. Or that decision, I'm sorry.
Okay. I, that's their, their wheelhouse, that's their field of expertise. And it's, it's of great concern, their comments.
More questions from the board? Okay. Is there anybody present who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Alderman Dowd. You know, the drill, please give your name and address for the record.
I think so. I haven't been here many times before, and sitting where you were for a while. For those that don't know me, and I'm not sure if any of you don't know me, I'm Alderman Dowd, and from Ward Two. I'm the chairman of the Joint Special School Building Committee. This application is part of an ongoing five-year project that the city has undertaken. It's a hundred and twenty million dollar middle school project. Several years ago, when the state and federal government changed the rules on middle schools, we was at a position where we were losing students in the middle schools, and we had, and they changed the curriculum. Unfortunately, at the time, we didn't change the facilities that went along with the new curriculum. We started looking this several years ago, and looking at a renovation of all the middle schools to bring them up to speed. Without getting into a lot of detail, we looked at Elm Street. Elm Street could not be converted in a reasonable manner. It was in excess of twenty million dollars plus overbuilding a new school. This plot of land that we're talking about tonight was earmarked over twenty years ago for a school location. And that's why it was selected. There are no other areas around that could handle this, this type of school. You know, right now, the project is, the Fairgrounds is now complete. We spent twenty million dollars renovating that school. That was the easiest to do. Penachuck is well underway. If you've been up Manchester Street, you'll see that we've added one wing on the south portion of the school. We're adding another wing on the north portion of the school, and then we're, next summer, we're adding a technology wing with a library. All the roads have been reconfigured to make it much more accessible for cars, and we've putting a traffic light on Manchester Street because of the traffic. So this, this project is very critical to the school department. And it's, we're asking for your favorable recommendation. We've done everything we can to mitigate the impact on the wetlands at the new school area. We even went so far as to have a lotline change with another piece of property the city owns so that we could move farther away from the vernal pool, the main vernal pool that he was talking about. And we also are willing to work with the Conservation Commission to do any other mitigating factors that they might have in mind. And we, we also offered to erect some, some things on the property that talk to the conservation of land and vernal pools and things so that the students would come up to speed on conservation. And we're still willing to do that. So it was some talk about getting rid of some of the athletic fields. Well, that's not possible for two reasons. One, the athletics is a main part of the middle school program. They use the fields every day. And the students that are going to be going to this school are coming from Elm Street. And these students, for years, have been without any athletic facilities outside. And to build a school now without that capability would be unfair to these students. To have two middle schools that have all the facilities, and then build a new school and not have the facilities, that would not be practical. So we're asking for your approval. We're willing to, and we will be working with the Conservation Commission to do anything we can to make sure that they have the least impact possible. So I want to thank you for consideration. And this is the president of the Board of Education.
Hi, thank you. I'm Heather Raymond. I'm the current president of the Nashville Board of Education. I live at nineteen Dunbarton Drive here in Nashua. I'm here to speak in favor of the relief requested. Elm Street and equity have been greatly on my mind for a very long time, since before I even ran for the board or thought about running for the board. I don't know if everybody knows this about me, but I worked for DCYF for seven years here in Nashua. And I was frequently called to Elm Street and frequently called to the homes and families of students who go to Elm Street School. And I, I see the inequities that Elm Street and Elm Street families have been accepting for years and years. All of the other schools have athletic programs on-site. If you're an Elm Street student, who are, some walk, some take buses to school, depending on where you are, you have to take a bus to another school to do any athletic program, because there's nothing there. And then for those students who are walkers, that's it. The parents are supposed to pick up the students at those other sports fields. So currently, Elm Street students who are walkers are not able to access the same athletics and athletic programs as students at other schools. For example, my son runs cross-country. Cross-country, they bus you over, and then you don't get bussed back. Parents come and pick you up. For spring track, same thing. They get bussed to Penachuck, they don't get bussed back. Parents have to come pick you up at Penachuck. Penachuck is not within walking distance of downtown Nashua. This new school we're building comes with a lot, a lot of planning and a lot of foresight. We're not only building a new school, we're, we're really investing in an entire redistricting program at the middle school level. We have redistricting committees right now, trying to figure out how we can divide up the schools, which currently have six hundred, seven hundred, and eleven hundred students, into three eight-hundred-student schools. And with that, we want all the kids who go to all the schools to have the same academic experience as if they were in any other school. And that includes their extracurricular activities, because we know, there's generations of research showing that kids who are involved and engaged in extracurricular activities are also engaged and involved in their academics. Being in an extracurricular and a sport helps kids to know that they have to do a certain, well, you know, they have to get a certain grade to stay in that. It's motivating, it helps build teamwork. So it's really important to me that we make sure that we have equity as far as the athletic fields. And I think that this design, which frankly went back and forth many, many times, does the best to make the best outcome for the most amount of students with the least impact to the wetlands. The other thing I want to talk about is how these are used during the school day. Because currently, we follow the next-generation science standards here in Nashua for middle school. We realigned our curriculum a couple of years to fall in line with the state's SAS testing. We also are using an Amplify Science curriculum. And part of that is physical and earth sciences. The students at Penachuck and the students at Fairgrounds are able to go outside when studying earth sciences, when studying botany, and actually go outside to the woods and the areas around their schools to do lab work and field work. The students at Elm Street don't have that. They simply cannot. There's no fields, there's no woods, there's no anything. There's no nature around them. And it puts them in a distinct disadvantage. And it, it puts them in a disadvantage when you think about kids who want to go on to science. I mean, how do you get interested in wanting to take a science class at the high school if you haven't had any fun labs, and it's just boring, and you're in that third-floor, stuffy, no-air-conditioned part of Elm Street? So, you know, we can't renovate Elm Street. We can't make it meet today's requirements. It doesn't meet the requirements for special education. It doesn't meet the requirements for students in wheelchairs or students with other mobility devices to get in and out of the rooms and in and out of the bathrooms. And it doesn't meet the requirements for current science labs. This new middle school will do all of those. In addition, it will have a new special program that would bring kids back into the, to the district who have intensive special needs and save us millions of dollars. So to me, this is the best good for the most people in the community, and I hope you'll consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else present who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody on the Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody in the audience with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? One at a time, please step up to the lectern and give your name and address for the record. And you have five minutes each.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kimberly Foster. I live at thirty-eight Pine Brook Road. I just wanted to comment, my son is on the Fairgrounds baseball team. That school is not endowed with the lavish amenities that we're proposing for the new school. He's shuttled to Led Street. He's a big hitter, and the fields don't accommodate him for whatever reason, but they also have, they have to accommodate the girls' softball team, which I see they hold at Fairgrounds. But he is bussed from Fairgrounds. So some of the amenities that we're talking about, equality, I'm going to just kind of bring more to light. I also want to mention, I had submitted a petition earlier today for your review, and I want to thank you for that. On August third, during the conservation meeting, Alderman Dowd at the Joint Special School Board Building Committee stated that the athletic facilities are part of the educational piece and required by state law. It's listed on page five, six of the minutes. I searched, and I could not find in the RSA's state law that mandates tennis courts. I could not find any RSA's mandating basketball courts, nor could I find anything in the RSA's mandating track, baseball, softball, soccer field, or soccer fields. This is an overspending and unnecessary hardship on taxpayers. Continue sharing nearby facilities and leave the protected wetlands alone. There should not be a right or an exception to allow any community to waste taxpayers' money, undermine our laws, stripping community confidence, and destroy protected wetlands and buffer zones, destroy wildlife, species of concerns or not, destroy habitats that have existed long before any of us. I ask that the Joint Special School Committee, Building Committee, and all involved with this project be the exemplar of our community. Stop wasting taxpayers' dollars, abide by our city ordinances, and follow the very best practices as recommended by the Conservation Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Somebody else wishes to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition?
Blind, can you hear me?
My name is Sherry.
The people on Zoom, please wait until everybody in the audience here has.
Okay.
And I'll call.
Yes, I couldn't, I couldn't understand if it was the audience or the Zoom. Thank you.
Yeah, this is, this.
Sorry.
I'll let, let people know on Zoom when it's, when it's time to speak up, please. Okay, continue, please. Name and address.
My name is Sherry Dutzy. I live at eighteen Swart Terrace. I'm here in, on obligation, I feel, as part of the Conservation Commission. We are, I am not against a school on, in this property. I am against the scope of the school. We're talking about two hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty square feet of impermeable surface that is going to be put on a piece of property that is totally forested at this particular time. If you look at the design that they have before you, I would say probably sixty percent of that impervious surface is going to be for ball fields, the basketball court, the running track, the, the field. In place of that, I looked at. looked at the landscape design, and it seems like there's going to be a lot of natural land that's going to be replaced with grass. And as we all know, grass doesn't really contribute to anything. I recognize that this has been in process for a long time, but a lot of change, a lot of things have changed in the past 20 years. We know more about climate change. We know more about wildlife habitat. In this particular instance, wildlife habitat is going to be affected. Yes, it will move. It always moves because it has to, but that doesn't mean that it's the right thing to do. I really think that this is, this was only presented to the Conservation Commission at the July meeting. We had no understanding before that in terms of what the design was going to be, and it appears that this is being fast-tracked. And I understand the reasons for that because I understand that we need a new school, and I'm not against that. But I really think that this is an opportunity for us to step back and reevaluate if all of these things are really needed. I would wage that if you surveyed the children coming into the school and asked them, would they want a tennis court, would they want a basketball court at the expense of taking, taking out wildlife habitat and cutting down, and I'm serious about this, thousands of trees, I think with them being on this planted, planet, another 80 years, okay, I don't plan on being here another 80 years, but these kids could be here another 80 years. Do they really want something like this? My feeling is, it's a 1980s design that we're trying to put into the 21st century. I just drove past Penachuck. That is an environmental wasteland. I look at Nashua North, Nashua South, the way the area around those schools has been designed, they're environmental deserts, okay? Lots of grass, one tree planted every 50 feet, you know, and it's about an inch and a half caliber tree. A lot of trees taken down, very little thought given to pollinator habitat, or actually any kind of habitat that could be educational. So I would just like us to step back a little bit regarding Elm Street. I just want to say, you know, there's, Salmon Brook isn't that far away from Elm Street. And I'm not saying that we keep Elm Street. But, you know, educational opportunities are around us all over. And if the Science Department at Elm Street wanted to put that as part of the curriculum, all they had to do was walk across the bridge. Salmon Brook was there, the marsh is behind it, and in fact, that's the marsh that Bishop Gerton uses for their science projects. So I just want us to step back and be a little bit more creative in what we're going to be doing going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, anybody else in the audience wish to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay, we have somebody?
Hello, I'm Carol Sarno, 15 Rocky Hill Drive, Nashua. And although I am a member of the Conservation Commission, I'm not representing the Conservation Commission here tonight. Do have a couple of concerns about the proposed school. The scope of the proposed development and the impact on the wetlands are, and vernal pools are my main concerns. As has been noted, the school is sited on approximately 24 acres of forested open space that includes 11 surveyed wetlands, including several vernal pools. The proposed development impacts about 90% of the larger parcel, the 20-acre parcel, and about 50% of the smaller four-acre, acre parcel. Trees will be cleared, wetlands will be filled, and the land graded for buildings, roads, playing fields, and courts. A unique wetland habitat, the vernal pool, will be impacted in this process. Vernal pools are temporary wetlands that fill up in the spring and usually dry out every year. In order to be considered a vernal pool, the temporary wetland must support certain indicator species. Vernal pools provide essential habitat for breeding amphibians, including frogs and salamanders. They also support other wildlife, such as the state endangered Blanding's turtle. In May of 2019, wetland scientists documented two vernal pools on the site. The scientists noted three additional wetlands that they said looked like vernal pools but did not contain the indicator species. They noted at that time that they should come back the following spring to reevaluate. They didn't. They didn't return in 2020. They didn't return in 2021. So those three additional vernal pools, I think, should be treated as vernal pools. The wetland scientists were able to, were not able to identify the species of salamander in 2019 from the egg mouses. They were recorded simply as mole salamanders, which is a large family of salamanders. There are four species of mole salamanders in New Hampshire, and two of those are listed as species of special concern. So we don't really know specifically what species of salamander were on site. Further, while the pool itself is critical to the breeding amphibians, the wetlands and the woodlands that surround the pool are just as important. Amphibians actually spend about, most of the year, about 11 months, in the surrounding woodlands and wetlands. They need areas of uncompacted soil, deep organic litter, coarse woody debris, and shade. So like a forest floor. Leaving a small buffer around a vernal pool, whether it's the 50-foot buffer that they proposed to put around the certified vernal pool, or the 20-foot buffer that they now propose to put around the possible vernal pools, basically leaves a non-functioning vernal pool. The 2015 Army Corps of Engineers New England District Vernal Pool Best Practices Manual, which I have here, recommends 100-foot undisturbed buffer around the pool and plus an area from 100 foot to 750 feet with no more than 25% development. So these are very fragile ecosystems. It's a very rare ecosystem in this part of the state. So in conclusion, I believe the development proposed in the current plan is too intensive. Basically, nature is being replaced with playing fields and buildings. I understand that Nashua needs a new middle school but cannot support the project as proposed. Perhaps a school with a reduced footprint in terms of the buildings and the playing fields would be suitable for these parcels, with emphasis on using the natural surroundings that are there as a classroom. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? No? Okay, thanks. Somebody else in the audience wishes to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition?
I'm in opposition.
Step up to the lectern and give your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, my name is Sally Grigus. I live at 86 Elmont Street. And I just have a brief statement in opposition to the special exception variance. Nashua is losing its forest to development at a very rapid rate. Ridge Road near Rotten Woods, acres and acres of land, have recently been cleared for development. Camp Ducette, a 20-acre sick wooded property, just changed hands to a developer and is slated for housing development. Nashua didn't seem to oppose that. The Buck Meadow new middle school project is squeezed between these two developments, adding to the decimation of Nashua's natural forests and leaving wildlife stranded and destroyed, which we never seem to consider about what are we going to do with them and they move in with us. From the plans on the 20-acre Buck Meadow site, it appears that 90% of the trees will be cut. It's time to stop building and respect our natural landscape, wildlife, and wetlands. This will impact our property values and welfare of our community as well. I do oppose the special exception variance for the new middle school's wetland and vernal pool enclosure. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? No? Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience with questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay, now we're going to go to the Zoom. Let's see. How do we, how do we figure out? I know there was at least one person on the telephone that wished to speak. So how about that person, go ahead and speak and give your name and address for the record. You have five minutes.
Was that myself?
I guess.
Was that myself? Oh, hi. My name is Christine, last name Piverato. I live at 60 Ridge Road. I'm very near the intersection of Buck Meadow. I use that road frequently. I agree that there is a need for a new school, but I'm very concerned about the scope and scale of the playing fields as our other commentators have made previously. I do agree with them. There are, and I'm not sure, I haven't been following the project, I do have a question. We have on Buck Meadow, or across, near, the fields that are near Captain's Corner, why are those fields not being considered as part of the athletic fields for the students?
Could you elaborate that? You said there's fields across Buck Meadow?
No, there's fields that are right near Captain's Corner that would be maybe a quarter-mile walk for the students to get to those fields, all those town playing fields. Why were those not considered as athletic fields for the students? Aren't those part of the Recreation Commission and those are on a reserve basis?
We'll get that question answered for you. You have any other comments?
I mean, because I think that's, I think that's critical because the nature of the scale of the project is, a lot of the concerns I heard expressed were the size of the athletic fields, the track and the tennis courts, et cetera. I'm just wondering why the athletic and recreational facilities just up the street were not considered in the planning for those, the students' fields. I hate to age myself here, but when I was a kid, I had to walk from the school to a huge facility which was all fields, which was a town field, similar to what we have here in Nashua. And the kids used to walk with their equipment and the gear, go into the field, and they had lockers and stuff, and then they would walk back to the school. So I'm just wondering why that is not considered to scale back the scope of the athletic fields where the proposed school is.
Okay.
So that's my question.
Very good. The way we work it is, is that people can ask questions and then the applicant comes back and answers the questions that were asked.
Okay, that's fine. But that's, that's my main concern.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is there anybody else on the Zoom who wishes to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition?
Yes, I can. Please give your name and address for the record. This is Christine Ford. I live at 18 Swart Terrace. I have been at this property, Alderman Dowd, with you guys. I've been at most of the JSFSC meetings. I'm in opposition to this entire project. I do know that we need a new middle school because I felt there was a lot of debate because I have a neighbor who actually was beginning to, I don't know if it stands right to a regular middle school that's built here.
Just pause for a moment. We're having trouble, I think maybe if you, if you speak a little farther from the microphone.
Yeah, I think you're too close to the microphone.
That might help because it's, it's very distorted.
Oh, okay.
It's not much better.
Ultra high that sound. Anyway, so I have been, you know, opposed to this project and at times, but again, you know, understanding that it's needed, you know, rationally. But having this piece of land earmarked, you know, 20 some odd years ago for a school, and perhaps at that time, I don't know if, you know, it was understood that there were wetlands there, invernal pools, and maybe endangered wildlife species, or maybe they weren't endangered 20 years ago. You know, I just consistently feel that this entire project has been sort of irresponsible, you know, to the land use. And as the architect of here and then sort of, you know, unveiled this, this design, it feels grandiose. It is a lot of money for the taxpayers. You know, I will admit that, you know, I've been against it a lot because I'm in a butter. It's, it's just going to disrupt our entire neighborhood. But I worry about the deforestation that other people are talking about ahead of me tonight. I really am. You know, you could sit out in my backyard, families of deer come out of the woods, turkeys, groundhogs, we have hawks. There are so many wonderful species of wildlife in this area, and they're all coming out of my backyard, which is this part of this property of land that you're talking about just destroying. You know, and I do understand that, you know, even Ms. Raymond mentioned having, you know, the kids be able to go outside and explore science. I'm not against that. I think, you know, even having this school on these grounds, if it could be scaled down, you know, I have consistently said all along, you know, why do we need all of these, you know, athletic fields? And I do understand having the consistency with the other middle schools, but it's just, it's too, it's too grandiose, and I think it's too much of a burden on the wildlife and, you know, the, the, the land. And it's just, it's irresponsible. And especially with all of the other, construction projects going around in this corner of Nashua and southwest Nashua, it's just, it's, I apologize, it's just one of those things that I just can't get on board with. So I want to thank the other speakers ahead of me who, who did mention all of these things and just say I agree. And hopefully, you know, there can be some more discussion about perhaps how to change the design or, or something to make this better for, for the land.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Courier.
Hi, hopefully Ms. Kristen Ford can hear me. I think it's interesting that you mentioned you have a, you know, a daughter who might be at either Elm Street or this proposed school. We've heard earlier about inequity, like in other words, if, if it, if we, if we kept the Elm Street school, there's inequity and it's much better off. What's your opinion of, of the Elm Street versus this proposal for your daughter? I mean, would you agree that there's inequity, or don't you really see that?
Well, as Ms. Raymond stated, didn't she say, at least with the athletic programs, that the kids get bussed to the other schools? Apologies, my daughter's only five, so I'm not familiar with how that all works currently as it is in the city. If that is the case, then it's not necessarily that it's inequitable, it's just a little bit more, you know, on the parents to have to deal with sort of picking their kids up from other schools and such, right?
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that.
Any other questions from the board? Not seeing anybody? Okay. Is there somebody else on the Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay, not hearing anybody. Ms. Courier, do you see? Can you tell? Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chair, there was one letter.
May I? Hi, this is Christine Piverato from 60 Ridge Road. I did have another thought, if I could address it.
I mean, we only allow each person, you spoke before, right?
Yeah, but I have a question about the sewerage. There's, what are the plans for that? Is that in another meeting?
Yeah, the way we, unfortunately, the way we do this is, is you had your time and we, we don't necessarily go back to people. So I'm afraid.
That's fine. Is there another meeting where I can ask that question?
Well, there, there will, if this, if we proceed, if this variance, or this, excuse me, this special exception is granted, the Planning Department, Planning Board will be, will be meeting to discuss the plan. But you could.
Okay, so I would have to go to the Planning Board meeting about that. Okay, that's fine. Well, you are the Planning Board, aren't you?
No, we're the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I'm sorry. But that's.
Okay, thanks. So nobody else on the Zoom?
Mr. Chair, there was one letter.
Yeah, well, we, I get there. Yeah, we have, well, we have, Ms. Grigus spoke in person, so we have her letter here, and she spoke already. We have a petition with 20 signatures and comments that will get added to the record. It's much too. It's much too large to. Yeah, it's two, two, well, there's two cages, right? You have, isn't that the same thing?
No, I checked.
Okay.
That came today.
Well, all right, we have, what are you, what are you doing here?
Mr. Chair, this is on the website and is part of the record.
It's part of the record. All right, we have these petitions that are asking the same thing about, that ask of, "Do you support preserving the wetland community in buffer zones and hold the new school planning committee accountable to following Nashua's wetland ordinances?" And all of the names attached to this say that yes, I support preserving the wetlands. So we have about maybe 30 or so. There's 20 on this one. Oh, there's quite a few on that one. Okay, so there's, there's lots. And this will all be part of, of the public order. Okay, at this point, the applicant has five minutes to respond to questions that are concerns that were addressed.
Mr. Chair, sorry, just one thing I, we normally do, and I just wanted to check with you and the board, is we didn't actually ask the applicant to speak to the specific nine wetland special conditions in testimony. If we feel that was covered sufficiently either by the other testimonies and/or the application, but I know we normally do.
Yeah, you're right.
Step through this, so I'm thinking.
You're right, we normally do that now.
We might be best to do that and then move into our rebuttal.
Alderman Dowd, are you prepared to do this, to answer these questions or?
I think that the engineer should probably.
I would say that the engineer should do that. So if you would come up, please, and there are nine special conditions, wetland special conditions that are required to be answered. The first one is that the use, use cannot be reasonably avoided. And you can tell me whether you agree to these things?
Agree.
That the least damaging, best practical alternative has been proposed?
Agree.
That acceptable mitigation is incorporated to minimize loss?
Agree.
You did say there was no mitigation.
There will be an in lieu fee payment made through the Department of Environmental Services that will support mitigation across the state.
I see, okay. That it is necessary for productive use of adjoining buildable land?
Agree.
That there are no rare or endangered species being disturbed? I'm sorry, did you agree to that?
The NHB report suggests that there are no endangered species that will be impaired by this project.
That adequate erosion and sedimentation control methods are being used?
Agree.
That the proposed activity shall not significantly impair wetland capacity for wildlife and fishery functions?
We have avoided the wetlands disturbance as much as possible for this project.
I'm sorry, could you say that a little louder? I didn't hear.
I said that we have avoided wetlands disturbance as much as practical for this project.
That the project shall not impair the stability of a water body's bank?
Agree.
And that the wetland and buffer function of absorption capacity and storage shall not be impaired?
Again, we have avoided disturbance of wetlands as much as practical.
Okay, and we received the Conservation Commission findings and they were unfavorable to this request. Okay, very good. Okay, so now we have, really, we have, we have five minutes. The applicant has five minutes to respond to questions and concerns by those opposed. One specific question was why were nearby fields, athletic fields, not considered to be usable by the school?
You're referring to the rectangular fields near Captain's Corner?
That, that's my presumption. I'm not familiar with them myself.
I think if you spoke to Jason, who head of Park Rec, you'd find that the city is woefully short of rectangular fields and are looking for field, additional fields all over the city all the time. This will actually add a rectangular field to the city's capabilities. Other people, other groups in the city, youth can use the facilities at this school. So that would not be configured, you know, not, you would, if you change the configuration to ball fields, then you lose the rectangular fields and, and that would cause an even bigger shortage than I have today.
Okay, and you heard the concerns of the other people who spoke in opposition? Do you have any rebuttal comments to that?
Oh, yes. First, the educational requirements for schools are not in the RSAs. They're in the State Board of Education requirements, so you wouldn't find them in the RSAs. The, the reason, one of the reasons for using this property is the city already owns this property. If we had to acquire a piece of property big enough to do this project, that would add several million dollars to the, to the cost. Also, we just acquired two pieces of property to get access off of Buck Meadow Road to the school, meeting the requirements of the Police and Fire Department and Emergency Services. And we now own those two pieces of land and have spent that money. So the other thing is that originally, when we had our original meetings on the property, there were some other people in the area that voiced concerns. Those people now have changed their mind and are in favor of, of the school being advantageous to their students going to school near where they live. The other thing is that at both Fairgrounds and Penachuck, general members of the public use the fields all the time. And that's what they're there for, whether it's, whether it's people playing tennis or whatever. But the schoolchildren will be using it during the day, Monday through Friday of school year. So we have done everything we can to do any mitigation to any of the wetlands issues and are willing to work with the Conservation Commission to do educational pieces, to enhance the education on wetlands. But we need to move the project forward. This, this particular property and school is about $60 million. Some of it's been spent already. And to stop this in, dead in the tracks and try to use, go somewhere else would cost the city an enormous amount of money. So I just ask for favorable recommendation. I think we've gone over and above meeting any of the requirements to mitigate the wetlands. And our construction company, Harvey Construction, Mr. Vice President's with us today, they are outstanding at making sure that everything is protected from when construction's going on, to make sure there's no, that nothing gets into the wetlands. And as far as the drainage on the system, the drainage will be far improved over what it is, and there will be mitigating areas so that any waters that leave the property won't be going into the major wetlands across the street. So just want to give you all that information. Are there any other questions?
Any questions from the board for Alderman Dowd?
I have a question, can you hear me?
Yep, can, go ahead, Mr. Courier.
Getting back to those state requirements that aren't in the RSAs, I just wanted to get clarity, like the basketball, baseball, track, soccer fields, are they nice to haves or have to haves? And I also ask that in light of, is Elm Street deficient? And Nashua is trying to get to the requirement? Or is, so is it a nice to have or have to have?
No, they have to have, and, and we are deficient with Elm Street, even though we have to bus the kids somewhere else to use the fields. Also, I forgot to mention that, with the advent of COVID, the air circulation in Elm Street, which is the only alternative we've had, if we don't build a school, the kids will be going on Elm Street. And the air quality, because of steam heat and everything, does not meet the requirements that we need. All of the schools that we're building today are using high filtration to make sure the air is pure, using recycling outside air. And that's critically important. On the Penachuck project, we, we removed and replaced all of the air handles on the roof to ensure the quality of the air for the students. And that's critically important with COVID right now. This new school will have the best ventilation possible by current technology.
I guess I have one other question. There was, the first speaker talked about, I think it was Ms. Raymond, that kids will get bused, currently getting bused from Elm Street to Penachuck, and then it's on the parents to get them back. If this school are built and the kids get bused to, to this new school, will it be on the parents to get it back? Or will the city be picking up that busing back situation?
I'll let Mrs. Raymond answer then.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. The answer is that there's a late bus that goes out from the middle schools. So were the Elm Street students having their practice on site, they could then take that late bus that stops in various places around the city to get home. That's what the Penachuck and the Fairgrounds students can do. But currently, the late bus doesn't go get them from another school. And they typically, like in the spring, Penachuck is able to start practice earlier than Elm Street because they just walk out the door, whereas the Elm Street kids have to get together. They have to, you know, get on the right bus, not the buses that are going out to the houses. It's not a huge, it's not a huge inconvenience for those families like mine where I have somebody available between 4:00 and 4:30 to go pick up my child. I can do that. But the reality is that not all families in Nashua have that convenience available to them. And I think that's what we talk about when we talk about equity. Any student from any household, anywhere in the city, ought to be having the same experience no matter what school they go to. They ought to have the same educational experience and they ought to have the same extracurricular experience. They ought to be able to take PE in the gym or PE around the track. And I, that's just what I believe. That's, as a parent, I want all families to have the same choices that my family has. So, thank you.
Okay, now, at this point, one and only one person who spoke in opposition may come up and give a five-minute rebuttal. I'm going to say that it'll be somebody here in the audience. Ms. Dutzy, you're going to do the honors?
I'll do the honors.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to say, I live at the foot of the hill from Nashua Catholic. So Nashua Catholic is a middle school. Parents pay good money to send their children there, and they have none of the facilities that we are talking about for this new school. In fact, the children of Nashua Catholic use my street for their, when they practice, for their matches, their, their running matches. Fine with us, we love it, we love to see the kids. We watch them go to Greeley Park when they're going to be doing other things. Doesn't seem to be a real issue for those parents. And I don't know any children that have graduated from Nashua Catholic who feel that they have had a deficit because they didn't have all of these facilities. The second thing is, as a state legislator, I know that there are many, many, many laws on the books that never get implemented and nothing ever happens. I'll give you one example. We have a law in the books that the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services has to update its solid waste plan every five years. That is a law on the books. The last time it was updated was 2003. I think they're in the process now, they finally figured it out, okay? But just because this is on the books for the State Department of Education doesn't mean that, you know, if we don't comply, that there are going to be draconian situations happening, okay? Other than that, as far as all of the facilities being the same, if I am reading the design correctly, it looks like there's going to be one tennis court at the new school. When I went past Penachuck today, it appeared to be four tennis courts. I don't understand the value of one tennis court if you're going to have a tennis team in the school. So right there, we're not talking about apples to apples with all of the schools. I really do think it is time for us to just step back and rethink some of these things that we feel are set in stone, okay? This is a perfect time for us to say, all of these things that we have, all of these assumptions that we have made over all of these years, do they still hold in 2021 with everything that we, between COVID, between the climate crisis, between what the next generation of kids going to, into the school may want? I just think it's time to step back. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at that point, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier, your comments?
Well, I'm, I guess I, you know, try to separate, what we're here for is a special exception for the wetlands. You know, it's, we can drift off into overall, much larger issues about education and equity. And I guess while, you know, as a resident and taxpayer, I've, I've struggled with the price tag on this. As a board member assessing the Conservation Commission's negative recommendation, noting it's a 3-2 vote, I mean, I, I feel that given the scope of the project, which quite frankly, I feel is large, but we're also being told it's mandatory, I, I believe a special criteria has been met in terms of the minimum amounts of mitigation. I know it's, it's, the term mitigation is used kind of funny because there's not mitigation from a wetland point of view, but there's mitigation from a payment point of view, which, which is an accepted or legitimate way as mitigation. So I, while I struggle with the scope of this from, is it really necessary? As a zoning board member, looking at the wetlands criteria, I feel that it does meet that, but I'm open to hearing other comments. I just wanted to say one other thing. I mean, I don't know if I've ever voted against the way the Conservation Commission has recommended. And if I do vote in favor, this would be the first. I do know it was a 3-2 vote on that, but I'll, I'll, I'll stop with that for now.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara?
So I'm definitely struggling with this one. I think there's no doubt that, well, at least I should say, I don't doubt that we need a new school. And when I look at the site, I really can't speak to what's necessary or what's not necessary, of her testimony to what's there is necessary. I'm just really zoomed in on a couple of the criterion. I do share the concern for the Conservation Commission recommendation. We have voted, you know, in a situation where the Conservation Commission has, has not recommended approval. But, but there are a couple of the criterion that I struggle with. I do think that, at least as someone said, especially the access impacts to, the access drive off Buck Meadow, I do think that that wetland impact is necessary for the use of the property. Where I'm struggling the most is really criteria number seven. Proposed activity shall not significantly impair wetland capacity for wildlife and fishery functions. I think there's been a lot of testimony to, to suggest that, in fact, it would. And I think when you look at the site, it's kind of hard to say it wouldn't since almost all of the site is going to be developed. So I'm struggling with that one. And I am struggling with the mitigation because I didn't see that incorporated to minimize loss, which is the wording, acceptable mitigation incorporated to minimize loss. That doesn't, to me, in lieu of payment, doesn't quite meet that criterion, but I could be convinced otherwise. So those are the two that really are a sticking point for, for me right now.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I am in support. I believe that the special exception criteria are met. And there's, I think, there's been a lot of discussion that's, I think, beyond the scope of what the special exception. scope of what the special exception requires and requests. And I guess I'll just state it pretty succinctly.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I'm also in support. I agree with Mr. Shaw and Mr. Courier in most part. Having had the opportunity to work for Penachuk years ago, we did a lot, you know, did a lot of work with DS, and having some familiarity with that, I know that this is an acceptable form, is a lieu of payment, because the state now can do things in other areas of the state to mitigate things that are done somewhere else. So whether or not we personally agree with that or not, that's commonly the practice. So just drilling back down to this, I agree with Mr. Shaw, Mr. Courier, that I believe that the conditions have been met.
Thank you. Ms. Boras?
I'm actually not in support of the application as submitted. There's quite a bit of opposition. I believe it can be downsized. I'm just not in support as it is presented at this time.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
Well, I too am not in support. I have great concerns. When I look at the wetland special conditions and when I listened to the engineer as he answered the questions, number five, no rare or endangered species, he danced around that one a little bit, and he said they were doing everything they could to mitigate any harm. Number seven, I agree with my fellow board member, Mr. Mankara, that I have a concern on that because the engineer also did not come out and say yes. He said they were trying to do the best they could and would work with the Conservation Commission. Number nine was the same answer. I wrote when he said yes, I wrote a question mark when he did not. And so I don't think these special conditions have been met at all. Do we need a new school? Absolutely. Are we going about it the right way? Maybe not. Can we take some more time? Absolutely. I think that the Conservation Commission needs to be brought in much closer to this project. I think people need to work with it. A three to two vote by this board would grant approval and wouldn't be diminished capacity. It would be a vote. A three to two vote by the Conservation Commission to say, we disagree, there's work to be done, means they disagree and there's work to be done. And so while I recognize the need, and while my son walked back and forth to Penachuk, and I understand all of that, I also understand that there was a lot of people who took the time to sign petitions to say, we have a lot of questions. We have concerns. Maybe, you know, we have 50 to 60 names. That's a lot of people who took time to say, please stop and study. And maybe that's what we need to do. Maybe we need to slow the roll here and just take some time to be thoughtful. I'm not saying negate this, but 20 years ago, that was then. This is now. What existed then may not be acceptable today. And so the standards have changed. The requirements have changed. And we need to address that because our children, our children's children, and their children are going to live with the ramifications of what we're doing. Also, we have been told that as a zoning board, we do not look to costs. We do not look to money. We do not look to any of that. We need to look at the land and the environment and the codes, and are we doing the right thing? And in my humble opinion, we are not. And because, in my opinion, we leave three criteria out of the nine with a big question mark, I say that's time to put on the brakes, let the engineers, the city, go back to the drawing board with the Conservation Commission, and maybe try and get this closer to right than it is at this point. So I cannot vote in favor.
Thank you. I am also not in favor. Ms. McKay has expressed a lot of the same views I have. I do not believe the special conditions have been met. I, my house is across the Henry Burke Highway from the Penachuk School fields, and I sometimes walk there, and nobody from the public really uses those. They're empty most of the time. I think that a lot of times when these schools are built, there are large expenditures on things that don't actually get used. And now, I noted when Nashua South High School got built, they put in a planetarium, which really puzzled me. I think that the Conservation Commission did not recommend this, that they had an unfavorable report, is a very strong indication to me that this is not the approach that we should take. And like Ms. McKay, I would like the city to go back and work with the Conservation Commission and come up with a plan that they find acceptable. We do need a new middle school. I don't disagree with that at all. But I don't think we need, you know, what I'll call gold-plated athletic fields that duplicate those that are elsewhere in the city. And that building them would require extreme disturbance of wetlands. You know, as has been said, you know, we know a lot more now than we did 20 years ago. And I think we should take some of that knowledge and put it to use. So I'm not in favor of this application. Any further discussion? Let's see. So I don't know how, usually what we do is we try to get a sense of the board. I see two in favor and two opposed. I didn't quite catch what Mr. Courier's position was. Do you have a comment, Mr. Courier, as to which way you're leaning?
Well, you know, I was, I kicked off and I was leaning a bit in favor, but hearing the testimony of all the board members, I, I'm struggling now with whether it's met the wetland criteria, just pulling up my notes here, the, you know, the number seven and number nine.
Okay. Well, what I'm going to do is I'm going to make a motion to deny the special exception, and we'll see how that vote goes. And if that vote fails, then we'll have another motion to approve the special exception. Is that acceptable to everybody?
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Oh, all of it?
Just a brief procedural comment and perhaps something for the board to consider. I apologize for not being in person, but I do have a bit of a cold right now. I wonder if perhaps the applicant would be willing to, rather than through denial of the board, but whether the applicant would be willing to accept a tabling of this application, allowing them to return to the Conservation Commission at a subsequent meeting in September for further discussion on the criteria, whether the proposal satisfies the criteria and the ordinance. By saying so, looking at the fact that denial may not be productive for the overall application and will simply result in the submission of a new application at later time, when in fact, the commission's concerns may be resolvable through a further discussion in September, and perhaps it continues to a September meeting of the zoning board to adjust it for consideration. I think it's our only other option. I'm not sure whether the applicant is menable to it. Obviously, there's, you know, there are some concerns about the timing of this application. And certainly, the concerns about the zoning board and the Conservation Commission are truly important, and I think the applicant is interested in satisfying those concerns. And I perhaps do wonder if a denial is not productive to the application, perhaps a tabling could be considered by the board. Thank you very much.
Yes, we certainly could just consider a tabling of the application if that's acceptable to the applicant. I see Alderman Dowd, Alderman Dowd, are you speaking for the applicant?
As in most meetings, my just shaking my head probably doesn't get registered. Yes, we can live with a one month while we work to mitigate some of these things, and we would be willing to table.
Okay, all right. So I will make a motion to table this case to a future meeting.
September 28th.
That would be September 28th, okay?
That's the next one, about a month from now, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my second.
September 25th. Okay, thank you, Ms. McKay, for a second. Mr. Courier, how do you vote on table?
Mr. Courier votes in favor of the table to September 28th.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Ms. McKay?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Leno, vote in favor. Okay, so if I have nothing, that this case is tabled to the September 28th meeting. And it is my hope that the applicant, the city and the Conservation Commission comes to an agreement on how to proceed. So that's the last case for the evening. We have no rehearing requests before us. We do have an agenda for next meeting.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, there's an extra week and schedule.
Oh, are we?
Oh, that's right. We don't have an agenda.
That's the wrong agenda. Okay, so we.
Built in, so we're working on it right now. There's, looks to be three.
Okay, so we do not have an agenda.
I'll email it to you.
Okay, thank you. We do have minutes from August 10th. I did have one comment on the August 10th minutes. At the bottom of the first page where it says, you know, I asked Ms. Boras if she was okay with Mr. Mankara voting on all of the cases since he was there in person. And so I said, it's written here, Mr. Leno asked if Ms. Boras, if she is okay with that, and the answer is Ms. Boras said not at all, which is the opposite.
I caught that.
Opposition.
Sorry about that.
She was, she was in favor of Mr. Mankara voting on all of the cases. Other than that, I had no comments. Anybody else with comments on the minutes?
There was a comment we all got.
Yeah, we, it's pretty obvious, isn't it? Okay.
Except I read it, I just, I read it as like, she's not at all.
Well, that's what she said. She said.
Yes, I knew it was okay, but I didn't.
What I had asked was, I said, you have a problem with it? And she said, not at all. So.
Actually, I have a jet lag that I wanted to just get off anyway. It's not a problem.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August 10th. Mr. Boucher, second, thank you. Mr. Courier, how do you vote on approving the minutes?
I vote in favor of the approval of minutes for August 10th.
Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Ms. McKay?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Leno, vote in favor, so those minutes are approved as amended.
Who seconded that motion?
Mr. Boucher did.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I will make a motion to adjourn.
Who? I'll second that.
Oh, I, let Mr. Shaw second it.
Okay, I'll let him second it. He hasn't seconded.
Okay, so we are adjourned at 3:30 PM. Thank you, everybody.
You're stealing my role here today.
I was going to go for the motion on that one. You took it.